Today is Wednesday, May 25, 2016. The time is 10:02. Called the meeting of Montague County Commission to order. But the record reflected all three commissioners are present and we have a quorum. This Memorial Day weekend's coming up. It's a special time that we take to remember those who sacrificed their ultimate duty by giving their lives for their country. So, keep that in mind this week and this whole weekend. Thank those that have given everything. Everyone rise for a moment of solemn meditation, clutch to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renetta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have nine exoneration listings today for $1,248. Fiduciary orders of May 25, 2016. Statement of services for fiduciary commissioners Lynn C. Crane and Cynthia Van Stafford. Vouchers, General County, $87,547.94. Coal severance, $399.78. 911 cash, $254. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,500. Camp Muffley, $2,024.31. Mason-Dixon Park, $31.14. Sustenance valuation fund, $24.10. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $9,025.16. Home confinement, $69.26.62. Camp Muffley, $282.02. For a grand total of $1,10,616.97. We have budget revisions for the Planning Commission and the Office of Emergency Management. Position vacancies for boards and authorities. We have still one position open on the Development Authority, one on the Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission, four positions on the Mon County Planning Commission, one position on the Chief View PSD. We also have positions open for Camp Muffley, Chestnut Ridge, and Mason-Dixon Advisory Boards.
Okay, let's take everything but employees.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, introduction of new employees.
We have one employee just moving from part-time status.
You look a lot better than the prior... Oh, I didn't say that. I didn't finish that statement at all. Thank you. Captain Ross.
Thank you. This is Winston Walcott. He is a... was a part-time processing and transport officer. We recently had a vacancy in a full-time position and he was definitely interested in moving from part-time status to full-time. So, he is... has been moved there by the sheriff. That was effective May 16th and he is eligible for benefits at a starting salary of $23,072.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. He's... Is he working late shift or?
He is... He's actually...
Driving people.
Bounces around.
About... It seems like we've met him before.
He was a part-time employee.
And that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that because if we don't do something and someone says, "Oh, well, you didn't do it for him," and then I have to explain it. It's easier for you to explain it. Cat.
Good morning. I'm at Chestnut Ridge Park. I have new employees here, Andy Moorhead, who will be a part of our cleaning staff for the summer during the week and we have another cleaning staff working for the weekends, which have already been introduced. He started yesterday.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Rachel.
Good morning. Rachel with Camp Muffley. I'm here to introduce a request for approval, ten employees for the summer, six of which would be cooks for our summer camps. Did you guys get this colored one?
Yeah.
I'll give you guys this, just to sort of explain why I'm hiring six this year. Usually we only need three for the summer. We do need six this year just because I couldn't find one single cook to cover the whole summer. So, on the letter, their wages are listed out there. Do you have any questions regarding that? On the second page are the lifeguards listed. The first two, Ms. Emma Slavelle and Mr. Matthew LeLore, who is present with me today, they are already certified. The second two, Mr. Jacob Shockley and Monique Rowe, they are not yet certified, but they are assigned up to take certification class, which takes place on June 12, 18, and 19. I would like to request their employment approval so we can... They can assist with opening the pool. Continuing employment would depend upon their passing of certification.
So, if they pass, then they'll take the position of lifeguard?
Correct. I would like them to start early to help opening the pool and they could also run a cash register, which would alleviate that responsibility from current certified lifeguards.
For one of the certified lifeguards.
Until they get certified in mid-June.
Move for approval.
Yes, second.
I got a motion and second, any discussion?
Just to clear that it's for both motions, the people and also if they pass, okay.
And if they pass, okay.
Yes.
I got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Very good.
I also want to congratulate you, Rachel. I mean, I know it's been very difficult to find cooks and you went out of your way and able to come up with a plan. So, I know it was difficult and we probably put you on the spot doing that, but we want to thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, sir. Glad to have you. If I go swimming there, you make sure you jump in and get me.
No. Maybe not.
Maybe not. If I go down for the third time.
The first two times, yeah.
The first two times, though, okay. Like to have a little joviality. It's important. Okay, anything else before comments from the public? Anything else? Okay, I'll open it for comments from the public. If anyone has any comments they wish to make, just please rise, state your name and address and you have a right to speak. One, two, three, one, two, three. Hearing none. I close comments from the public. Colleen, too, grants.
Good morning.
Hi, Colleen.
Good morning.
I'm here.
Renetta didn't forget you this time.
She wouldn't. Wouldn't allow.
Just teasing with her.
I have two requests for reimbursements. One is for the Community Development Blank Block Grant from NYSP in the amount of $1,075.69. And the other one is for the JJDP Grant in the amount of $1,721.37.
Move for approval, so the president may sign.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And there were a couple of requests for reimbursements that I had to sign due to time constraints for the Governor's Highway Safety Program. One was alcohol transfer in the amount of $2,641.99. The DUI in the amount of $2,637.36. Department of Highways Distracted Driving in the amount of $1,732.40. And then, no activities.
I have a motion to confirm her signature as authorized.
So, move. Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your effort. Okay. Well, I guess I got introduction of new employees out of order.
It's okay.
It's all right.
It's okay.
Forget about it. Is there a need for an executive session?
At a later time, yes.
Okay, we'll delay it till the end.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Correspondents, requisition number 15, Star City Tiff Project Number One. This is the matching funds that you see in the chart in the back for the DOH work on the connecting trail. What's the wishes of the commission? The Tiff would pay $24,000, the grant, which is a matching to a $96,000 grant. So, for $24,000, we end up with $120,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay. Any other correspondence, Renetta?
No, sir.
Any unfinished business?
No, I don't have.
Any new business?
Yes. We have some new business.
You got some new business?
I would move that we close the road repair fund from our budget, in other words, eliminating this line item.
Second.
And move it into general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Right.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
I would like to close the Scotch Run Sewer Fund of a very minimal amount that we need to close.
Second. I'm assuming that's a motion?
Yes. That's a move, okay.
A motion, yes. Okay. Then again, going into the general fund.
Correct.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Just cleaning up some extra accounts and got a thank you from the tax chief.
Which leads to... Are we going to discuss it now since I'd be...
What's that?
The budget.
Oh, yeah. What do we have?
Since we opened the door so we could...
Well, yeah.
Resolve the budget.
Actually, it is.
You have a summary in your packet.
Uh huh. Okay. Basically, our... As I've always said, our general... Our general fund's in good shape, always has been. Our budget is basically what we've been able to do with the budget, of course, is be able to keep the levy rate the same. It's continued... Actually, it's continuation of our plan for the property reappraisals. We've got two more years of that until we'll be revenue neutral for the entire periods. So, there's no change whatsoever in the levies, levy rate. We were able to actually put some funds back into the Financial Stabilization Fund, which I've always been very adamant that we try to have that sort of fund there. We've also given the employees of the county 2% raise across the board. We also, in the effort to get the deputies back into... Back into a more competitive role, we weren't able to give the full amount that we'd hoped to this year, but we are giving $2,000 this year to each deputy. I don't know if I missed anything. Does he?
If I might.
Yes, you may, sir.
May... Well, do you want to put on a... Should I put on a motion first?
Why don't you go ahead and do the motion.
Yeah. Move that we approve the fiscal... Tentative fiscal year budget.
The levy.
Levy estimate.
Levied budget.
As presented.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and discuss.
Okay, what I was going to ask, if Renetta would be willing, you gave us a summary, not reading all the specific numbers, but like, the first paragraph, the three paragraphs below, and then the paragraph about coal severance.
You want to just read that?
Yeah, could you just read that? You don't have to read the numbers. Just read the... I think that way the public knows what's going on to clarify, okay?
Proposed levy rates for taxes in Mon County is 12.00 for Class 1, 24.00 Class 2, and 48.00 Class 3 and 4. I need to revise that. It should say 3 and 4.
Yes.
That provided $19,203,264 in property tax receipts for General County operations. That amount, in addition to other general receipts, provided a current proposed budget amount of $31,595,864. Last year, the General County Fund budget was $32,727,073. Other receipts include income from the anticipated carryover balance, grants, hotel taxes, property transfer taxes, interest, reimbursements, and other miscellaneous receipts. Federal grants estimated to be $500,000, state grants in the amount of $300,000, and other grants in the amount of $5,000 passed through the annual budget on a reimbursement basis. The proposed General County Fund budget includes funding for the operation and maintenance of county park facilities, Chestnut Ridge Park, Camp Muffley, and Mason-Dixon Historical Park. Grant funds are being provided from the general revenue for health and safety items, park and recreational programs, arts and cultural interests, seniors, and other items. Positions vacant for one year or more were eliminated from the budget and across the board increase of 2% for all full-time and part-time employees paid from general fund is included in the proposal. For budget year 1516, the sheriff requested that the commission consider an increase to upgrade salaries in civil service law enforcement officers for which $4,000 was granted, an additional amount of $2,000 per officer is being proposed for fiscal year 201617. Funds from this budget will not be available until July 1, 2016. Due to the further loss in coal severance taxes, agencies were again transferred to the County... General County Fund. Some agencies were eliminated from the budget entirely. The commission has indicated that this will be the final year that they will make this adjustment. In conclusion, the levy estimate being approved today is based on levy rates of 12, 24, and 48, with a total of $31,595,864 being anticipated for expenditure. It is important to note that the West Virginia State Auditor's Office will issue its approval before the official levy rate can be set. Coal severance fund budget also being approved today has anticipated funds in the amount of $160,000. Approximately $181,613 in funding was moved from the coal severance fund to general fund. Agencies that petitioned the commission for an excess levy and were approved by the voters of Montague County will provide relief to the General County and coal severance funds in the amount of $1,264,000. Total combined budget of both funds, $31,755,864.
Thank you. Before I have a couple questions or comments, I wanted to make it very clear to the public that I want to thank my two colleagues. It was not easy. The three of us had very strong views on what we wanted to do and move forward and I really think the cooperation of... That's something that I wish was happening in Charleston right now, that I wish we could pass on down there, was the number one priority was to come up with programs that was best for the community and funded in a way that everyone would try and understand, you know, the direction we went. I first want to clear that if you look, we lowered the budget $1.2 million. So, it isn't that, you know, we just gave away money. We lowered money. We decided on... Unfortunately, had to reduce the number of agencies that we were doing coal severance. And on a one-year basis, as you mentioned, I want to clear, on a one-year basis, I want it very clear, we moved 180,000 or?
181,000.
181,000 into the general budget for one year because we felt that it wasn't right, you know, to immediately cut all the funds out of these outside agencies. It's real important the quality of life. With that being said, I think the three of us realized it could not have been done without the community voting for the levies. By their support, we then came back and tried to give them funds which they wanted. So, again, I'm real pleased that, you know, we were able to come to a compromise. I said, "I really..." I mean, even though you quote "have one Republican and two Democrats," I think what you had here was three county commissioners realizing that we had to move forward and do what's in the best interests of this community. And I think we did and I wanted to thank you two publicly. That's what I want to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Alvin?
I'm very happy. I think the spirit of cooperation, collaboration that has been exhibited led to something that I think will be a benefit to the community and I'm very happy with to present this.
I think I pretty much stated this is a good, solid budget and sometimes you have to make compromises. And I do agree that it is not... It is not fair to just close doors. So, if we can make a transition and give people time and these outside groups that they can find other funding means, it's better than just whacking them off at the knees so that they have to close their doors because so many people in the community rely on them. So, that was... There's a lot of funds that we were able to draw upon, such as the coal reallocation fund that have not been tapped into. We tapped into it to make it possible to support some of these outside agencies. The general taxpayer on real property has been protected and it continues to be, even with the passage of the levy, we're still at the lowest of all the 55...
Fifty-third.
We're 53rd now. 53rd lowest of all the 55 counties. So, the people that are paying their taxes, they need to realize in terms of the Montague County Commission budget that they are paying substantially lower than the... Than 50... 50, I guess, 52 other counties. And the other ones within a couple dollars, I mean. So, I'm very proud of the budget and I'm very proud of my colleagues. We went through times that people loved to sit back and Monday morning quarterback and beat on us and I think all of us kept our heads up and we all worked together and we got the job done. So, I'm very proud... I'm very proud of that and I'm very proud of our staff. Renetta was instrumental in putting up with... Oh, will you people make up your mind?
Yes. That was a nice one.
That was a nice way she did it. She did it much nicer than that even. But, yeah, and of course, the rest of the staff and of course, the help of the departments. I want to praise the officials. They understood the situation. All the county officials understood the situation, worked to hold on to as much carryover as possible. They worked hard. When the budget was sent back, they asked for a little more help. They dug right in there and every one of them, to the letter, helped to find additional funds to make this fund possible. We're probably the only county that's went down in total expenditures.
Than that much.
And by quite a bit. So, I'm very proud of our budget. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you. That was... Any other new business?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We forgot to put it on the meeting last week, but I just wanted to ask if we could have authorization to have Global Science and Technology complete a site survey of the existing IT infrastructure.
I'll second that.
And again, you want to explain?
Go ahead.
Basically, what we had done is unfortunately, in this today's world, we would need to make sure we have to protect ourselves and there have been situations where there have been... What would you call it? Not breaking?
Hostage.
Yeah. Situations that we wanted to make sure we knew what we had in protection and how we wanted to secure all the offices. So, this would be an actual...
Scammers could seize the data, seize people's personnel... Personal data. You can imagine the type of information that's available in the computers of the county that needs to be protected.
So, that's why we're trying to do this and get a clarification before we move on.
Do you want to go ahead and throw in requesting her to write a letter to?
Yeah, okay.
Just go ahead and bundle that.
Also, we were going to request with that that Renetta would send out a letter to all the offices notifying that the GST will be visiting each office so they understand what is going on. So, we send the letter and once we approve this.
We're just going to... We're asking to do a survey and analysis of...
Yeah, and they're going to overview it.
Whether we have problem areas or not have problem areas.
Yes, and we've already found a couple.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more new business? Hearing none, reports from elected official, our clerk, County Carrie Blaney.
Jay, have you certified your election?
Oh, we forgot to certify the election. No, we didn't. See, that's why you're reporting to be here. You keep us alive.
Do you have a... Yeah. I will so move to certify the election and have the president sign it.
Everybody needs to sign it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. amended so all three have signed it.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
You have anything?
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Carrie?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mayor?
No.
Do you have anything? Captain Ross, do you have anything for the Sheriff's Department?
No, sirs.
How about you, Kelly? Anything from the Tax Department?
I do, but on behalf of the sheriff, I just wanted to let you know that he and the chief are in Bridgeport today, receiving an award from the National Guard in recognition as an employer.
Right. That was really great. When I saw that, that is really an honor.
They were nominated by one of the deputies and so they are...
To support our veterans.
Exactly.
It's a good week to get an award for that.
And I have spoken with the auditor's office about the levies and at some point, if we could be put on the work session. And I'd like to request, if I could, that someone from the county clerks...
Yes.
From bookkeeping so that we make sure that we are...
Do the levies, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be scheduling the agencies in as well. I've talked with all of them.
That would... Yeah.
Yeah.
So that they understand... Once we decide...
Exactly. We have to clarify.
We need to do it next week because this all needs to be done before 1st June.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Bobby, Renetta, anything? Reports from county commissioners, Tom?
Yeah, actually, some very positive reports. Tomorrow at 4 o'clock, there is going to be a dedication at East Oak Grove Cemetery by Tanner White, who did his Eagle Scout project, where he has a flagpole, cleaned up the whole area. And also, most people don't realize that there's probably more veterans buried in that site at East Oak Grove Cemetery than in Wilson, the county. So, I'm real excited to be a part of that and I would just want to open that up if anyone wants to. It'll be a short 10-minute ceremony, but I'm real clear for that. The second thing is, I don't know if you knew, but during that snowstorm we had back in February... I wrote a letter to the District 12 Department of Transportation in Pennsylvania on behalf of the three of us to thank them because they came and actually went all the way down to the interstate and went to Star City exit and turned around. So, they did several miles. And the governor was so pleased that he put it in his announcement, so...
District 12.
Yeah, this... Well, no, put it for the entire state, the DOT. But they were very... And it just reads, "District 12 lends a neighborly hand." And you never know when, if you do something positive like that, you know, we're able to work. to work, so I wanted to know, what you all know, that that went really well. We are still also selling tickets for the June eighteenth program, that's going very well, for the Veterans Appreciation Day and showing Ageless Friends, and that was it.
Commissioner Ralston?
Very shortly, we do have a wonderful holiday coming up, I hope that everybody does remember the spirit of what this holiday is, it's not just simply to grill out, but remember those who serve. Eldon and I did attend the MPO meeting last Thursday together, I'll let him expound upon anything else, and that's really all I have.
Yeah, we, we had the Metropolitan Planning Organization, there's various issues that we're working on. I think, as we, as we do the studies, I think what, what's of significant influence from the MPO is to understand the role of the planning organization. Basically, it works for the DOH, doesn't work for the DOH, that's wording it incorrectly, works for the community on DOH-planned roads, because of the Department of Highways. If you're of a certain population level, the Department of Highways cannot receive federal funds without community input and community planning, so that's the whole purpose of the MPO. I'm, I'm excited with the movement of where we're going and where we need to go. Our metropolitan organization, under the two thousand census, how it has now included all of Preston County and all of Montague County as a single metropolitan area, that's, that's very exciting, in the fact that we've also just passed, legislature just passed two critical bills for counties to work together, and as I've always said, the roadways and the infrastructure needs and the planning needs don't stop at the county border, they go across the county border, they go from one activity center to another, be it, be it residence, church, commercial, recreation, government, whatever it might be, that's, that's the critical aspect of it. So as we look forward to the future, we need to realize that our growth is going to continue, our success is going to continue, if we plan for it, if we work together, if we recognize, even like law enforcement needs. Every, everything requires a certain level of infrastructure, and I basically include people in that infrastructure. We have to have educated, highly qualified people. I want to pass on to, the other thing I want to do is pass on to the Sheriff's Office, my thanks and appreciation for the efforts that the first responders give to our community every day. It's so significant, and we'll, we'll keep, keep in mind your efforts and your sacrifice, and we'll see how next budget, next year's budget comes out.
And we thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we have an executive session planned, do you have one more?
I missed it in correspondence. We've got a letter from Clear Mountain Bank requesting the release of a security, and they're going to replace it with another one, it's for one million dollars. The, the original is number three-one-three-three-EA-four-K-one, being replaced with three-one-three-three-EF-six-S-one, in the amount of one million dollars, with SunTrust Bank. Just need your.
Move for approval. It's regularly done.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Move to go on executive session, pursuant to six.
Oh, wait a second, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse.
I was quickly, I was.
Oh, go ahead.
Speaking of awards, Mike Ellis of West TV was presented Democracy in Action Award on Saturday by the League of Women Voters, Morgantown, Montague.
Now, Mike, can you step out in front of the cameras? You need to turn, you need to do a selfie right now. Mike, we really, we really appreciate your efforts, I, I appreciate, Kelly, that you brought that up, because it really makes a difference, you know, people, almost anyplace else, people would say, well, we don't know what's going on, they know everything's going on right here. Even, even my sad jokes that don't work are fall flat.
I'll move to go on the executive session for personnel, six dash nine A, dash four, dash two, dash B.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We'll take a, we'll take a five, ten-minute recess, and then we'll go into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A move to come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed. We're adjourned, thank you.